Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We thank you all for taking the time out of your schedules to be at this regularly scheduled Vator City Council meeting. I personally extend a welcome to all of our council members for being here, with one exception. But with the forum that we have present, I would officially call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM and would invite our city clerk to engage in our roll call.
Okay. Andy Wilson, present. Jason Daley?
He's came in earlier and indicated that he's got a physical problem and would not be able to be in attendance tonight. So he would be excused.
Okay. Joe Schei?
Present.
Mike Parsons?
Present.
Ruth Creer?
Present.
And Mayor Smith?
Also present. With that, let's proceed with our Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Wilson, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You need a pen, John? All right. Well, let's proceed with the mayor's report. I have two quick items. I don't know if I reported them before. An update on the fallen tree that fell in front of Rodney Allison's property.
I reported that to John, and he went down there with a chainsaw and cut some of it down. But it being in the city street, we could have a liability. It's not worth being there. We should take it completely out of there, period. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I went down too and talked to Rodney. Rodney had the near-death experience. It did hit him as it fell. He happened to be close to it. If he'd been 10 feet closer, he probably would be with us today, effectively. That's the second time that tree has lost a large chunk of it. It's got several trunks. So I agree. I went down there and Rodney cut up first himself, taking out some, venting his anger at it. But did a number on it. But then John did go clear it off the street. It was covering the entirety of that street.
What is that?
It's, do you know where Rodney lives? It's north of the jail.
You know where the junk is by Jason?
It's on Fifth Street.
Fifth Street.
Fifth Street, between A and G.
Oh, that junk is.
Anyway, I bring it to your attention because it did create some drama in the community. And I agree entirely that the city should remove that tree completely and eliminate that hazard. So that was that report, in case you're wondering. And number two is that our city clerk asked that I inform the council that on Wednesday of next week, which will be the 28th, I believe, both our city clerk and our deputy clerk will be in Tenayo getting required clerk training. So the office will be closed. That we will have, the auditors will still be coming to the city of Vator starting Monday and Tuesday of next week. And they'll not be here Wednesday when it's closed, and then they'll come back after that. So next week begins our official 2016 audit. And I'm confident that we're ready for that. So that represents my brief little report. Do we have any council members who'd like to provide counsel reporting for the greater good of the public?
That's in over here.
Good. All right. Well, then let's proceed with our agenda approval. Approval for this evening's meeting. I know that Mr. Schei, you did have something you wanted to add.
Yes, just be, what should we call this?
Street paving?
Street paving.
Report?
Bid? Report, yes. Street paving report and bid estimates.
Okay. We probably should put that in form of a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to add as item number eight, street paving report and paving bids.
Are you approving the agenda and adding that or just adding?
Adding that.
Just adding that, not approving the agenda at the same time?
Well, I think I heard him say that you were approving the agenda with the addition.
If there are no other additions?
Yeah, that was well said.
If there are no other additions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item number eight, street paving report and paving bids.
Okay. You heard the motions submitted by Mr. Schei to approve the motion of the agenda with that addition.
I made a motion to approve the motion.
Okay. So you've seconded the motion. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. All right. Now let's proceed through with the approval of the minutes from our previous council meeting.
I made a motion. We approve the city council meeting of 9/8/2016.
Okay. Mr. Wilson has submitted a motion to approve those minutes as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Creer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Vouch for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the 1st of September 2016. The end of September 2016, $9,349.63 for a September 2016 total of $26,022.67.
Mr. Schei, you submitted a motion to approve of the vouchers as noted. Seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Special reports. Thank you. Do we have any special? No reports this evening? Okay. It's time now for our public comment.
We don't have any public comments either.
Ooh, wow. We're two for two. With that, then let's proceed with city business. Item number one, council to consider revised emergency preparedness proposal. This agenda item is a continuing effort on the part of the volunteer, Dossie Wilson, who's former Pierce County Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, who recently moved into southwest Loudes County. And in conversation with me, which was while we were, I was in attendance at the Cascadia Rising Emergency Preparedness Event, she expressed to me her willingness and interest to provide emergency preparedness instruction for the city of Vator as kind of an experiment. And you will, the council members will hopefully recall that she came and she indicated she'd be willing to engage in this process where we divide the community into districts of some sort, and then identify neighborhood groups who would oversee emergency preparedness efforts within each of those areas or districts. Well, sensing that there might not be a lot of responsivity in the city of Vator, she approached me again and suggested that maybe it would be too ambitious to divide the city and engage in that strategy. So she is now submitting a second proposal to maybe just invite the general public, residents of Vator, to come to one meeting in which she'd be willing to make the presentation and share with the residents, however many we could convince to come to it, ways to prepare themselves for a potential crisis of some sort. So I told her I would submit that revised proposal to the council tonight. And then, as luck would have it, was it today or yesterday? It was, I think, yesterday.
Wrong, it's today.
Today. We received a proposal from the Earthquake Country Alliance organization, and I just got it myself, but I got a phone call from our deputy clerk who is intrigued by this. And it's entitled "A Shakeout Drill for Government Agencies and Facilities." And apparently, this has to do with an activity that would involve residents of a community in its likely, probably, where they fake injuries and have response functions in kind of a practice drill. And our deputy clerk expressed interest in it. And I just thought it was kind of odd that we would get these two separate proposals in our hands. And so I'm going to go sit here and quickly suggest that I would like to submit these materials to the council members for your consideration by our next council meeting. Would that be something that you'd be willing to read or want to read?
Yes.
I'd be willing to read it.
Okay. Well, then, with that having been said, I will prepare copies of this. This is Dossie Wilson's, or Dossie Wilson's package. And I did read through this in its entirety. And I have to admit, I've gone to the Cascadia Rising event, this is outstanding material. And that would be of great value and benefit to the residents of Vator if we ever did experience that cataclysmic earthquake in our community. So, but I won't give any more editorializing. You'll see copies of it. With that, that's all I would propose to the council on item number one. Item number two, council to consider resolution 15-2016, set bank deposit requirement threshold. Yes, I hope that you've had a chance to read the document. I'm sure it's been prepared. There's a reason for this. I warned our city clerk that she'd need to be prepared to brief the council members on the need for that. I'm aware of it, so I don't hold all the verbiage.
So state law says that the city needs to, every city needs to do a bank deposit every day, but there is a clause that allows for exceptions if the council passes a resolution stating that, "We know this is the state law, but we're making an exception because..." And the city had already done that in the past. I'm sorry, I don't remember what year it was they passed. Because we don't have very much staff, very many staff members, and because we don't have a bank local, it's, we have to travel to go to a bank. The council had already previously approved that we could do, that we could do deposits not every day. And so generally, the city does bank deposits about once a week. If for some reason we get a lot of cash on hand, if we get a whole bunch of cash payments for some reason, we generally will do an additional deposit just because we don't like holding all that cash in City Hall, just for safety sake of the funds and ourselves. We generally do that, but in the past couple of audits, the auditors have mentioned that it might be a good idea to add something to the ordinance that we already have that says what the threshold is, that once we hit a certain amount of funds being held, that that triggers us to have to go to the bank. And they suggested that we do it as a policy. And I thought, well, the auditors are coming. Wouldn't it be nice if we had that in place already before they got here so we could say, "We did it, we did it." It's not required, but it's recommended as a policy, and so as a policy, it's written as a resolution. So basically, we just kind of refreshed that resolution and added a threshold dollar amount. And the dollar amount that you see there is just what, basically, there's no, there's no, nobody has a recommendation. Nobody will provide a recommendation on what dollar amount you should do. And they said it's really, each city needs to decide for themselves. And so the mayor and I discussed it, and we discussed it with the deputy clerk, and we came up with this number where we felt like, once we have that much cash on hand, that's when we kind of start to feel uncomfortable having it here. And so that's the dollar amount. You guys can set a totally different dollar amount if you want, or you can say, "We don't want to set a dollar amount." So it's up to you guys.
Thank you for that clarification.
Well, like you just said, we've done this for many, many years, and we've never had any problems, period. And I think we should just keep it the way it is. If we need to pass this draft, well, let's pass it and go ahead with it. So I would make a motion that we pass resolution number 15-2016. A resolution of the city of Vator, Washington, repeating resolution number 28, I mean, 2009-11, clearing exception under RCW 43.09.240 for city of Vator from requirement to make daily bank deposits established in policy from when such deposit priority included establishing a bank and deposit threshold requirement, requirement of safekeeping of funds.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Wilson has submitted a motion as read to approve resolution number 15-2016. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll stop.
Seconded by Mrs. Creer. But now it is an opportunity for you to provide additional commentary or observations. Here again, okay. Let's put a plug. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? If that motion is carried, thank you. That is very wise and timely. Thank you for that quick action. Update on code enforcement progress. This is going to be a continuing agenda item. I want the council members to stay, or at least be aware of the progress that we're making on the six entities, units, dwellings in our city that have received a formal notice of violation. And to nutshell it, we wouldn't probably want to get into specifics on particular units. We have gotten official responses back on five of the six.
Four. Well, official responses from three. One, compliance, and then two, we have not heard from at all.
Okay, I miscounted. Then, yeah, and if you would like to know which two have not, you could certainly talk to the city clerk, rather than make such things a matter of public, a discussion in a council meeting. But my overarching perspective is that I'm very pleased. You noted, one is in complete compliance. That's impressive in and of itself, but we're making progress. And so I'm very pleased with what's happening in this. And we're in the process of preparing several more letters for other ones, yes.
I just wanted to also make mention that the three that we have had contact with are all working on asking for a little bit more time to complete what needs to be done. And so they're all in agreeing, in agreement that they will be taking care of it. We're just putting together a document with the attorneys that says when they have to have it by. They've all asked for extra time, which is a common thing. So they would sign a voluntary correction agreement. And so when those are ready, we'll bring them to council for final approval, and the dates will be on there as to when they will have theirs. So there's three that are saying, "We will get it done. We just need a little bit more time." And so, once those are ready, I would expect those all three to be ready at the next council meeting. I can't see any reason why they wouldn't be done by then and be ready for you guys. That's what I'm shooting for, so those three. And there has been considerable improvement on two of those people's property as far as vegetation and stuff. There's been considerable improvement. They haven't complied completely, but they're working on it. So there are efforts going on. The letters, I think, have been very helpful in some cases. And the two that we haven't heard from, well, they get the next step, so we'll see how that goes.
Thank you. I would want to put in a plug, just so that you're aware of what's that I have as I monitor this, and that is our city attorney is doing an extraordinary job for this community. Jennifer Robertson may be just one of the best municipal attorneys that I have ever become acquainted with. She is a workhorse, and she's fast, and she's accurate. So I just put that plug in.
Oh, I'm sorry. That just reminded me of one other thing that council might want to know, is that these voluntary correction agreements that the three homeowners have asked for, they are, they understand that anytime our attorney spends on doing those, they will be required to pay for the attorney time to create those. So that will be part of the agreement, is that they will have to pay for the time, so...
Is that extension something that we'll be able to get from the attorney without the dates filled in?
When we give it to you guys, it should have all the dates filled in.
No, I mean, in the future, because I'm sure that this will happen multiple times throughout this whole cleaning up.
So you're saying, is there like a standard form?
Is there like a standard form that says, you know, hey, I need a 30-day extension, a 60-day extension?
Um, not that I'm aware, because every situation is different, and it depends on what the violations are and how long they need for each violation. So there's sort of a standard form, but as far as the dates are concerned, it's going to depend on what the owner's going to do. And so those and what their violations are.
That's what I'm saying. Is there a fill-in-the-blank?
There is kind of a fill-in-the-blank form, yeah. It has to be detailed specifically for the particular, you know, there's a beginning that's always the same, and then there's the ending with all of the laws and stuff quoted and all their rights and everything that are quoted that are all pretty much the same. But the middle part, the meat, all has to be kind of fine-tuned for their particular situation. So normally, you know, to put one together, she said it takes her about an hour, you know, to do the research and put one together. So, you know, that's like $200. If they don't, if it comes back and the person says, "Hey, I don't like this. I want to change the wording around," or whatever, and it takes more time, that's fine, but they have to take, they have to pay, you know, they'll be paying for whatever extra time the attorney has to go back and redo stuff, so, anyway, that's the situation now.
Okay. Well, thank you for that clarification. And as I indicated, if any of you are interested in getting the specifics of each of those particular cases, don't hesitate to talk to her, she's got the documentation that she could share with you. Okay. All right. With that, I would proceed with our next item. Item number four, report on the wastewater treatment facility plan update project. As I believe you're probably aware, we're operating on a timetable with Civil West, the company that the council selected to engage in this function for us. We had a, it was about a two-and-a-half hour, three-hour meeting this past Tuesday, day before yesterday, here at City Hall. We had two representatives from the Department of Ecology, Greg Zentner and Al Bolinger. We had several representatives from Civil West, and myself, and Mr. Wilson were present with our city clerk.
Kathy Reed.
And Kathy Reed, of course, with the Department of Commerce. And we just followed a very good agenda and had a brief discussion of the project history and review of certain of the alternatives presented in our previous studies. And then we talked about some additional alternatives, which was quite intriguing because Civil West is thinking outside the box. And I actually got a few goosebumps listening to them, because they are genuinely determined to find a solution that meets the DOE requirements and is as affordable and less expensive than the previous alternatives that we've been dealing with. Would you echo those sentiments?
Absolutely, yes. And there is, I do have, I received today minutes from that, or notes from that meeting that I will provide to each of you in your box so that you can go there and see what we talked about.
Yeah. And one of the representatives from Civil West took copies of notes throughout the entire proceeding, which was impressive in and of itself. But I was very impressed with Garrett Palo, the president of Civil West.
Well, it sounded to me when I was there, or is that short time I had to be excused, but is that they've got some alternate plans other than what we've been heard from before? I'm strictly against this optimization dish, period.
Yeah, right. I don't think, it'll be interesting to see what's on the table, but they have an aggressive calendar, a timetable. We could have relaxed it somewhat, but we decided we'd try and stick with it. If in February and March of 2017 it's necessary to back it up, a matter of weeks or a month or so, they would have that flexibility. And I'm readers digesting the discussion that took place, but there is a calendar of events. The next would involve, I believe, a public meeting. What was the date on that? Do you happen to have the calendar?
I don't have it with me, I'm sorry.
You didn't bring it either. But it would be in the very near future, I think amid October or early November.
I thought they said that the council meeting that they would come to would be when they were at 50%.
Yes, but that's fairly soon.
Is it?
I think it was November at the latest. So that means that they would have completed 50% of their evaluation of possible options. They'd meet it 50%, 75%, and the final product would, of course, come before the public and the city council. So stay tuned. They're meeting the bushes today, I'm sure, in the city of Vator. It's that due enough to work with at this moment in time.
One other thing that you might want to, I don't know if you caught your email today, Mayor, but we did hear back from Ecology about the collection system and INI, because Civil West is wanting to include the INI, the inflow that we have in our collection system, the extra water that gets in, wanting to include that as part of the issue and part of the solution to our waste treatment needs. But Ecology, when they were there at the meeting, said they weren't sure if the funding that we had to spend on this would allow us to include the collection system as well, or if it was just the treatment plant. And so they checked into it, and they said, "Yes, it will allow them to include the collection system as well." So they're going to, as planned, they were going to go ahead and be able to do that. We got Ecology's approval, basically.
That's good.
To address the collection system as part of this whole thing, so...
Because we'd have to fought for that inclusion without getting the particulars, but that's good.
That's good news.
So we've just eliminated that little fight. Okay. Stay tuned, there'll be more on the horizon. Okay. All right. Then with that, I suggest we go to item number five, council to consider fire investigation services. Hopefully, you got a letter under Paken, had a chance to read it. Obviously, this is an ongoing issue that is troublesome to the city of Vator, mildly troublesome. We're going to be demonstrating our responsivity to the concerns raised by Rich Underdahl, fire chief. We're going to be demonstrating our responsibility to the concerns raised by Rich Underdahl, Fire Chief, in this letter. And, right now, we've, I can report that we've been in contact with Les Townsend, with Townsend and Associates. He's the individual who does our building inspections and such for the city of Vader. And he's dissecting this letter even as we speak. Well, maybe not right now, but he began this process. And so, he's gonna get back with us, what would be the wisest response to it. And, we're studying our options legally as well. And so, we're not prepared to give, I think, a definitive answer yet to you tonight. But, I'd be shocked if we didn't give a formative and effective response to it by our next council meeting.
I think so.
Is that, that's a Band-Aid answer to this. But, we are responding to it, and we are confident that we'll have a response, will give the council members something to chew on and to respond to Mr. Underdahl. That will be, hopefully, pleasing to all parties. Any questions, comments, concerns on that? Okay. Then, let's move to item number six. Council to consider two thousand seventeen budget schedule. You have an official copy in your packet, and it's the same as the schedule that the council approved at our last meeting. For those of you who might have been in attendance, no changes to it. I'm comfortable with this.
This is what council said they wanted to do. So, I just finalized it, and so, if you guys are still happy with that, you can go ahead and make a motion to approve it, and then I can publish it for the public to be able to.
Okay. So, it's ready for action?
Yep.
That's the bottom line.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget schedule for two thousand seventeen.
Okay. Mrs. Creer submitted a motion to approve this schedule as formulated.
I have seconded.
I did hear a second from Mr. Wilson. Any other observations? Are you done?
Just, just so that, make it known, on the thirteenth, I will be out of town.
Okay, but what month was that?
October.
Okay. We should still have a forum, I think. Okay. All right. There are no other observations, then let's put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there are any opposed, motion is carried to. Item number seven. This is obviously a continuing, ongoing council discussion on concern over speed limits in the city of Vader. This is, I think, our third go around on this topic, and I think we're ready to delve.
I don't know what our ordinance today, what the speed limit is for the city streets. I know for the state highway, we can't do anything about five oh six, that's thirty-five miles an hour. But, myself, I think it used to be twenty, and I'm very satisfied with the twenty, because the fact is that you still see people, because I know, because I'm sitting right out there in the middle of the night a lot of times, and I can see a variety of different wheelers, and young kids. And law enforcement, when we had a, law enforcement here in the city when I was mayor, and we had five officers at one time, they couldn't control the speed limits. And so, all you can do is put it on paper that it's twenty miles an hour for speed, or twenty-five for the speed limit within the city limits. That's just about all you can do, because enforceable is very, very hard, and even if you have a dozen police officers. Looks what's happening in the world today with what we're having in North Carolina and all that. All these police officers, they can't control what's going on either.
Right.
It's, it's, this is a very hard.
It's tricky.
Subject for me, or anybody else to consider what you're gonna do. That's my thought.
Okay. Note that we had an upraised hand by your city clerk.
And I just thought I would mention that there's been a handful of people that have brought it up when they've come to the window during the last two weeks. And all of them said that they thought that the speed limit in town was thirty-five. Again, it was just a small handful, but they all said they thought it was thirty-five. And they said, maybe there's, you know, we kinda thought, maybe there's just not enough signs up telling people that it's twenty-five. I think when you come into town through the highway and it says thirty-five, I think people probably just assume that it's thirty-five. And I think there are probably some signs that say, that are out there, but there's not a lot. That was just something that I would bring up to council.
I think what, what you might do for the city is that when you've sent the building out, you could write out some kind of, this is the ordinance for the city of Vader. Just notify everybody once and for all, and say, this is the ordinance, and this is the way we wanna see people operate. Be a little public relation with the people when you write the letter, and say, please, help the citizens. This, this is my.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Just to send out a little public relation letter. I've done that with junk ordinances in the city a long, long time ago, and it worked. A little public relation letter, go send it out, clean up your junk.
I'm sure they responded right.
Well, you aren't, when you send out a little PR letter, you aren't threatening. You're just giving them information, maybe you're the one, when you, when you write the letter. Maybe you're the one that they wrote the letter for.
We did have a comment from the public, would the council care to entertain that?
I was wondering how practical speed bumps are, because they're nonjudgmental, they don't go anywhere, and people out of concern for their own vehicle, once they know they're there. But, it is usually twenty-five in most residential areas where I, where I travel. Maybe speed bumps in the critical places, by the Assembly God Park, a few places like that.
Yeah, we did research that some months ago, right? And decided that, as good an idea as they are, they're not cheap.
The cost.
They are cheap.
Right.
Okay.
So, that idea's been removed from the equation. But, I have not seen a lot of speed limit signs, and I know that we were talking about the matter a day or so ago. And it would require us to purchase signage, and that is gonna cost something, but it could be done. I don't know that there's any specific ordinances about speed limits in the city. Are you aware?
I don't know, I've never looked for it.
I don't think there are, but, so the council, if you are determined to do something about this, you might want to do some research, because it would cost something, not prohibitive probably, but you know what signs cost. Something to think about.
I would anticipate that the speed, the speed limit sign would probably cost about thirty-five dollars for the sign, plus the post.
Post.
Is usually more expensive than the sign.
I wonder if just a sign at the beginning of town, as you come into town on both sides, that just say, hey, side streets are twenty miles an hour, or whatever it is that we do. That way, we don't, because I, I think I've only seen one speed limit sign on, on my way through town to my house.
Where, where is that at?
I think it's on E Street, once it turns to gravel, and it says twenty. What?
There's a one on eight. One on eight?
Eight. And there's, when it turns on E Street, as it goes down and turns into gravel, I always laugh, because it says twenty-five there. When it turns to gravel.
Slow down.
That's right. I mean, slow down.
You're going fifty's. Well, all right. Okay, so.
If you're an officer of the law back there, maybe you could show some love.
That's true. Put you under a little pressure, yeah. What would be, what would be your opinion?
And what's your question about?
Speed in a normal little community like ours.
Uh, most of them are twenty-five. And yes, you don't have very many signs, and yes, I agree with the councilman there. No matter how many cops you are, you aren't gonna stop them all, because we're never around when there's speeding. It never fails that you, we're not there when there's speeding.
Hey, I've lived here, what, ten years now, and I've not actually seen a lot of speeders, but I know they're out there, so. Okay, continuing discussion?
Well, you like, was that, is that, we can put a season speed sign up by where are the thirty-five miles, uh, city limits, speed, period, and just put one there, and one down the other end, and try it. See if it'll help some of these people.
Can you check to see if there's an ordinance?
To me, that would be the easy.
I think you'd want to make, be careful where you put such a sign, or it might confuse motorists.
Well, that's true too.
Yeah, and I tell you, so we'd wanna check out the legalities of such a sign. I'm not, I don't think I've ever seen such a sign.
We used to have truck wait, wait signs.
Yeah, we still have that, and we're working on that too. That's a problem in the city, but that's a different issue. So. Any more commentary, or shall we just research costs and?
See if there's already an ordinance.
Yeah. And then, continue it in our next council meeting. Okay, we noted.
Was the state going to take and put crossing marks on the highway?
Yeah, yeah. I'm confused at what the state is doing now. When they were doing South Military, the chip sealing, I thought that that's when they were going to bring their equipment and re, or chip seal five oh six. And at that time, they were going to then install the, this heavy duty paint and such. They didn't do that.
But they told me.
Are they done? Five oh six is not my department.
Come on, Joe.
Save us here.
Yeah. Oh, state. Can you tell us?
I think they're working on the, just by the three corners. Maybe they're trying to get that done before they.
Being done with it by Castle Rock?
No, right at the corner of even town going right over.
Oh, went on Vader Road by those things.
They're doing work there in the bridge, and they may be wanting to get that done before they.
Thank you. I think that might be the answer. So, let's stay tuned with that. No, I'm sure that they did indicate that they were gonna do that. That was the answer to the concerns we had about pedestrian safety. Okay. Maybe we could inquire, find that out. Thank you. All right, any further discussion on that topic? If not, then let's go to item number eight, final one. Mr. Shai, I believe, has some information to share with us all on the street paving.
My department.
Yeah.
So, we finally have all three paving estimates in. State law requires us to have at least three estimates for any project over, what's the limit, three thousand?
I think it's three thousand.
Three thousand dollars, so. The scope of work is Tenth Street, from E to H. Yes, so about one thousand feet of roadway. Also to include just the beginning of Alpine Court, the cul-de-sac back there. That way, it strengthens that section that leads into Tenth. So, three, three bids, all for the same, the same scope of work. You can see here that the bid from Lakeside is about twice as much as the other two companies. You should know that North Fork is the company that did a lot of the work around town the last time we did paving work several years ago. So, all the really, the really nicer looking side roads in town were done by North Fork.
And they've held up quite nicely?
And they are. And, North Fork, they say they're going to do the same kind of work that they did for us last time. The same, the same style that's held up really well around town, so.
Joe, remind me again when this was gonna be completed, when?
When?
Yeah.
Uh, we would have to approve it. This would be, these are funds from the city of Vader's budget, as, from our street pay, our street budget, as well as STP funds that are held in trust at the county. Those funds come from gas taxes and, and all of that.
What is the amount that we have set aside for this? We have budgeted twenty-five thousand for the year, although we have used about twelve hundred of it on other small, little repairs and things. That is ten thousand in STP funds. I think we have more than that in the STP funds, that was just a guesstimate. I think now, this, with this year, we actually have a little bit more than that, so I think we can cover. I think we've got just enough to cover it there. Won't be a lot left over.
This Tenth Street, the Tenth Street project is the number one project that previous city councils have decided that they wanted to start work around town. So, this would be the two thousand sixteen project that we would fund.
And it doesn't fall under the TIB funding?
This is not. This is unrelated to TIB, this is unrelated to any other grants that we have going on. This is our own project.
And I guess what I'm saying is, the reason that it's not up for the TIB grants is because it doesn't qualify that.
Right.
At this point, this section of the street doesn't fall by for those grant funds. That's why we are looking at that. But that is the top priority. You might also mention that Lakeside, however, their bid was the highest, but they did comment that they felt that doing a two inch layover of asphalt was, would not hold up for very long. They felt that the street itself was so poorly degraded, so far degraded that you should really do a complete rebuild. And I'll let you guys discuss, I don't have any experience on that, but that was there.
We had a, we got a bid, oh, listen, here from Bob first.
Do you have to?
I just gonna ask if, Ananen, because it's a part of the power, and is that considered there? Was that considered as far as work, have that section rebuilt?
We, we had, well, Ananen is not Vader's responsibility. We did get a, an estimate to repair the section from Highway five oh six, about a quarter of the way down to McMurphy. That way, we could present it to the railroad to see if they will pay to have it fixed.
Have you done that thing?
I have not, I, the bid is, the bid is done, it has not been presented to the railroad yet.
But that's what you were working on?
Yes. That's a separate, separate thing. Yes, so Lakeside did say, in this, and you'll, is it in this, or was it in the email?
I think it was in the email.
It was in the email, yeah. They said that they felt that the whole road needed to get rebuilt. Last summer, I had a bid from Lakeside to do that. They would pulverize the entire road and rebuild it from scratch for a cost of eighty thousand dollars, which would be great to do, but we don't have eighty thousand dollars. The opposing opinion would be from North Fork. They thought that they could come through and do a full overlay, patch it all up, and do a full overlay, and we'd have the same quality of road that we'd have in other areas around town that they did.
We need to do A Street also.
Excuse me?
We need to do A and Main Street, especially Main Street. Not because it's made, but that's the first line place all the way down to, no.
And that's part of the TIB project, isn't it? At least partway, part of it is.
A Street, yeah.
A Street's part of the TIB project.
Yeah. We may have that covered through other means, for free.
So, stay tuned.
Ruth, this is Tenth Street from E to H, it's from.
What I wanna know is which streets has North Fork done before? What I want to know is which street has North Fork done before? Do you know, do you remember?
Ninth Street, just to the south of City Hall. And they did the connecting street from Ninth to Tenth, that section. And then they did that strip all around Andy's House and Main Street.
They did this little strip right here on Eighth Street between A and Main. How long ago was that? Couple of years.
Well, some have been four or five years.
At least.
And my experience with North Fork is that what they do lasts. And there have been some that they've done, some in front of Mr. Wilson's house that was just as bad as that in some locations, and it's holding up well. One concern I've got with them, and I think you share that, is that you've got to make sure they make it as wide as they can. They will do what they can to keep it as narrow as they can, so.
At the school years ago, we had a grant to do.
Or D.
D Street. To do D Street, and they made us. Every who done it, I was just on the council, whatever who was in charge told us we had to make it eighty foot. That's why we spent so much money with the grant fund money to do that street now.
It's nice.
It is.
It is nice.
They made us do it.
And it was well done, I'd say.
Well, North Fork planned, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
They were going to, they were going to keep the roads the same width that they already are. That was their plan.
Should be adequate.
Fourteen feet on that section of Tenth back there.
Now, again, I am not an expert in this, but just what I've learned in the last few years, and somebody, please correct me if I'm misspeaking, but my understanding is that there's two things that are enemies to road services, and that is overweight vehicles and water. Those are the things that tend to break up the pavement more than anything. So we need to remember that these projects are not addressing the foundation, which determines how heavy a load can be on it, and these projects are not addressing drainage, which is an issue that we have in some areas of town. So eventually, those things will affect this section. And I just think it's important for council to realize that these, this is a good, I think, in my opinion, is that we need to do this, but to understand that this is not a fix for twenty or thirty years. That this is, this is a kind of a longer-term patch for a while, but that there will still be things that may need to be addressed on that street, like drainage. I'm not sure if drainage is an issue there. I know it is in some other places in town. And with the TIB grants, it's great because they always address those things. They make sure those things are addressed and included. But like we said, it's, this section doesn't qualify for that grant funding, so we're kind of on our own. But just so that council has it in the back of their mind that, you know, there still will be issues coming down the road. This will definitely be a large improvement for a long time, but not forever, I guess.
Did they do, did they do, sorry if you answered this already, but what's the street that you live on? On the corner from?
It's Ninth in front of me.
Ninth is in front of you.
That's E to the side.
Okay, so from E, Ninth, Ninth and E to Tenth, that's like the really nice.
Yes, they did that.
They did that, okay.
And that was at least four, maybe five years ago. It's hanging in there.
Yeah.
Well, no. Okay. So I guess the question was asked when, we've got the three bids now, so what would be the next step for the council?
The council would choose a provider, and I would hope that we would contract with them to have the work performed right away.
Yes, you would select the bid and authorize the mayor to work on a contract to do the services. Or you could say, if we don't like these, we want margins. Or you could say, we don't want to do it. Those are your options.
It's almost October and the rain season is about to come, so.
Well, I'll make a motion that would go with North Fork asphalt paving for the amount of twenty-three thousand.
Well, we've heard motions, but by Mrs. Creer to approve North Fork in the amount of twenty-five thousand. We had seconded by Mr. Wilson. Additional thoughts? Here and then, I think it's ready for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Well, thank you, Mr. Shai, for providing some solutions to the number one priority in this community. Potful nature of our streets. Well, decisive action on the council. We thank you for that. With that, then authorization of the mayor, we will press ahead with it as quickly as we can, hopefully before it gets any rainier than it already is. So I believe that we handled all of the agenda items. So without any further ado, the fire and council meeting closed at six fifty-two, no, fifty-seven PM.